I'd like to call the Thursday, May 16th Board of Education meeting to order at 7:39. Roll call.
Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Here.
Vice Chair Nafriya?
Here.
Secretary Siena?
Here.
Janne Bosamo?
Here.
Carolyn Candelora?
Here.
Vincent Mace?
Here.
Cynthia Rice?
Here.
With the flag.
At pleasure of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors? I think they all left. Okay. The students' representatives are going home to study. And our guest speakers are in session. Approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 11, 2019 Board of Education meeting as of noon.
Second.
Discussion? Approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Personnel?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Mr. Phil Palma, business teacher of North Norfolk High School after 18 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Ms. James DeAngelo, grade three teacher at Totucket Valley Elementary after 23 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Ms. Deborah Signor, grade one teacher at Jerome Harrison Elementary School after 31 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to approve the retirement resignation of Ms. Karen Davis, English Language Arts teacher at North Norfolk Intermediate School after 36 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
To approve the retirement resignation of Ms. Kathy Zerzuski, Ms. Special Education Teacher at North Norfolk High School after 38 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retirement resignation of Mr. Robert Dara, English teacher at North Norfolk High after 19 years of dedicated service to the students of North Norfolk.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Mrs. Marissa Levine, K-5 literary coach, effective on the end of the 2018-2019 school year.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There are no appointments at this time?
Before we move on, I would just like to publicly thank those six employees. Combined, at quick math, it's like 176 years of dedication to the North Norfolk school system for those six employees. They have done a phenomenal job working with our students. We wish them nothing but the best. We will be honoring them at our June meeting, prior to our June meeting. So, thank you.
Still no appointments. No leaves.
Okay, thank you. For the superintendent's report, we have some recognition tonight. We're very pleased to have Jackie Thurston with us this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Carter Welch, who is going to talk about some of the honors that have been bestowed upon Ms. Thurston through a very selective program for the Fulbright Teachers for Global Classroom Awareness. Ms. Thurston has done an amazing job working with our TBS students for several years and has been recently recognized and will be traveling to India this summer.
Oh wow.
And she's going to bring a great deal of wealth, expertise, compassion, and training back with her to share with our students much of what she is currently doing in the classroom at this time. So without further ado, Dr. Welch, would you like to share a little more about what Jackie's been doing?
So obviously it's a great recognition. It's one bestowed on the head by 78 educators across the country. She's the only one from Connecticut. So, a great honor. Certainly attribute to her hard work, her creativity, her ingenuity. And I think since this recognition, she's just been a bundle of energy. If you know Jackie, she always is that. But with these new ideas, she's been bringing a lot of things to our students. I'm not going to steal all of your thunder with that, but she's been inspiring a lot of our fifth graders in particular to take action. That's one of the global competencies that kids have really taken to, about how they can get involved and take leadership roles and really make a difference in their community. And then secondly, she's really taking the experience of going to India and trying to bring that idea of making students of North Norfolk more culturally aware, that there's a much broader world outside of North Norfolk and our kids need to be exposed to. So I got the pleasure to go to Washington DC with her as part of the Global Educator Conference, which was a fantastic experience with educators from all over the world who have done this program before and have gone to other countries. And it was great for me as a principal to be there and get some of the other principals that have worked with teachers have done this. So I think it's a transformative kind of experience. So we're really excited to have it in our school and I think North Norfolk should be proud of Jackie.
Do you get to go to India too? And the curious. Great accolade. Congratulations.
Thanks very much. So I'm really proud to represent North Norfolk's program. It's been, like Carter said, a career-changing experience for me. We did a four-month intensive educational class, which exposed us to resources, endless resources, a lot of technology, a lot of, and we talked to teachers all over the world and the country about how to raise global awareness in our districts, how to learn how to collaborate, get your kids to collaborate with people from different cultures, just have your students be curious about the world and want to investigate the world around them. And then like Carter said, a big piece of it is how to take action. So teaching these students that even though there are 1 in 7 billion people in the world, that they can look at the world and say, "I feel passionate about this and I would like to take action on that and make a difference." So that's what a lot of the shift that we put forth, Carter and I put an action plan together in DC. And you've seen a big change and a big inspirational impact on a lot of the students where they feel like they have a voice and they feel more curious and excited about the world around them and what there is to learn and people to meet. And my experience in India, which will be about a month long, I'll be able to teach our different classrooms in all parts of India. I'll meet different educators in leadership roles and all of India, learn about the culture, learn about their educational systems, and then hopefully bring that back to North Norfolk and make North Norfolk a piece of that, so that it's a start of an international connection for them moving forward.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, really.
A month long, wow.
I know. It's going to be, we'll get a lot done and we get to meet a lot of people, a lot of connections.
And this is so impactful in how it can roll out onto our community.
Yes.
In a world that changes so quickly and we don't have nearly enough tolerance, this is enormous. And thank you for being exceptional in a world full of mediocrity. I mean, this is really going to show kids that they can do anything. One in seven, you know, 70 teachers get this? This is enormous. We're a little town. It's not like we're Chicago or New York. I mean, you really need to emphasize this to the students. We have so many bright kids that don't know more than North Norfolk and that's not bad, but to see someone, you know, doing something so large, this is very big scale.
Yeah. I'm hoping that it just brings the world to here so that, like you said, it'll bring, expose North Norfolk students and the world around them and how big the world is, but yet how small and how they can impact whether it's locally or globally. And it's already streamlined. I mean, we're focusing a lot on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, which are 17 goals to make the world a better place. And each student has chosen one and that they feel passionate about. They develop action plans and projects to start making change, whether it's in the school or locally in North Norfolk or even on a larger scale. We had a class who sponsored the Heifer International, Heifer International, which buys animals such as cows from villages in Africa. And they got to see the cows and they understand what impact that means on what seems like a world away, but really isn't so far. So it's nice to see already a change. I'm hoping, or we are getting the students very involved if I trip to India, so it's sort of an initiation point into wanting to know more about the world.
That's great.
You have a question?
Sure.
What triggered your interest in applying for this? And could you just describe the process? Was it rigorous in each step of the way?
Yeah.
How did this all come about for you?
Um, I'm a big traveler. I love to travel the world and I set a goal for myself a few years ago to travel to a new country every year. And then I had someone who had done this program in the past and said, "Jackie, you're a perfect, like a perfect fit for this. I really think you should apply." So I applied in January of last year. It was, it was pretty rigorous, very, very lengthy application, many, many essays. And then you find out in July, you got accepted. And I got accepted, then your intensive class started September. So in September through December was probably 15 hours a week of work towards this program. And it was, it's been wonderful. It's a lot, but it was, it was all worthwhile. It was great. And I just, I've always been curious about the world and at working with Norfolk for 13 years, I see that as a need for some of the students that they maybe don't know much about the world around them, but I think that they would love it if they got that spark and that interest and that fire of saying, "Oh my gosh." Plus, we want them to be 21st century ready, where you're, I think they said 108% of international work in Connecticut, like since 19, or 2000, has, is all international and all, everyone's working across the world, across cultures. So we want to make sure they're ready for that.
Thank you for applying.
So I think everyone agrees that Ms. Thurston is a wonderful steward, not only for our students, but for our staff, for being a lifelong learner and really exemplifying and showing the courage to get out and do this for her youngest learners too. So you're a great role model. So if you don't mind, could you do the walk of fame and just shake hands with your board?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Beth. Thank you. You all have to follow my flow. Thanks, Dawn. I appreciate it.
Can I give her a peek for a moment? Do you have the passport?
No, just go, the curious. Let's see how it is.
Okay. The next one I'm asking for, the approval of a donation from the Norfolk Congregational Church. We'd like to thank Reverend Robin Blunden for her generosity and making a donation for our food service for any students who have outstanding balances at the end of the year. This money would go towards alleviating some of the hardships that we have.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the generous donation in the amount of $1,300 from the Norfolk Congregational Church to be used toward paying the outstanding balances of students receiving reduced lunch through the National School Lunch Program with grateful appreciation.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to Reverend Blunden. There are no field trips to approve. Our sixth grade class went out on a road course today, had a wonderful time. Eighth grade leaves tomorrow morning at 6:30 for their Boston trip, should be home by nine o'clock. So we hope the weather is as good for them as they go. The board briefs are attached, I'm sure you've all read through them. And if there's any questions? If not, we're going to move on to our spotlight, which is going to be moved to June. So we're going to ask the students to come back and present, and that's NBIS, who will talk about community service and some of the initiatives they've been doing. Next up is the budget. As you are aware, last night was the vote and it was just less than 2%. So per charter, the budget stands as is. The administrative team has been meeting to work with that number. You just approved six retirements this evening, which obviously with six people going out is the most we've had in quite some time. That offset and relieved some of the pressure of our original status quo budget. With that being said, we've looked to do some things with those additional monies. There were other plans. We wanted to try to integrate some things into the budget, but we've had some new information about some out placements that we are going to be cautious with what we move forward tonight. So Don is going to walk through the budget tonight. Do you have the opportunity, if you'd like to accept and vote on it? You may. If not, if you'd like to have a budget meeting, we could have a budget meeting prior to the June meeting and then we could vote on it at that time. Okay? So Don pass this around.
Yeah, there's actually two motions here, one to approve and one to schedule a meeting.
Thank you.
Since we didn't meet earlier, let's maybe.
If it's easy to read that number, that's fine.
Thank you.
So as Scott mentioned, there were, obviously the retirements are factored into this as we had originally proposed before the budget went to the town council, that we were holding one unfilled retirement, which we did, that ended up being actually Kathy Mez, although that's not the position that will remain vacant. And so this really just kind of walks through everything. We are switching a, Karen Davis is a language arts teacher. That is actually going to become a math position and then we're going to backfill the math position at the high school. This accounts for the, one of the high school math teachers going into the NBIS program and being paid for through, by the School Improvement Grant. And that's pretty much it in terms of the personnel. So the positions that were retained or that are included are the additional fifth grade, a full K-5 social worker, an RTI para at Jerome Harrison, a TBS special ed para. And then there were a couple minor salary adjustments because of lane changes. I also went through and I did a health insurance update. The last week, the numbers came out from the state partnership plan, the premiums. So I was able to factor that into this. There were some pension adjustments that was actually a reduction. We did need a little bit of additional money, which we've taken from the building budgets. So in addition to the $26,000 up on top, there's another $7,000 down on the bottom. But we did have to add $171,000 for out-of-district placements. And had it not been for that, you know, this would have been a different look, but that was something we had to account for.
So the difference is to kind of quantify what Don just said in looking at this. I know there's a lot of numbers here. You recall that we had a part-time social worker that's moved to full-time, we're able to do that. The fifth grade teacher is a one-year position because of the population of that fifth grade class. So we're hiring a one-year teacher there. And then the additional paraprofessionals in the buildings. So we were able to offset it with the six retirements that dropped the number down. We have to backfill, we have to fill those positions, obviously, but at a lesser rate than obviously people who had 30 to 40 years of experience. And we were able to offset that. The curve ball came in in the last couple of days with these out-of-district placements, which we do not control and we're obligated to fund those placements.
What's this one resignation, Carlisle?
That was the school psychologist at NBIS.
Oh, that was.
And that was already done. I had originally carried him in the budget, but this contemplates rather than replacing him, having a retired school psychologist continue to do evaluations.
Part-time.
On a part-time basis. So there's, obviously there's a significant savings there.
Did the out-of-district placements go up?
Yes. Yeah.
What were the pension adjustments?
That had to do with, mostly was related to, one of the retirements that you approved earlier was in the old defined, excuse me, the old defined benefit pension plan. And that cost is about, next year is going to be like 65% of salary. But since that person retires, the person that comes in their place will only be in the defined contribution plan and the contribution for that's only 10%. So we picked up a significant amount on that one. And we only have now, I believe, three employees remaining in the old defined benefit plan.
Right. So we didn't really do badly. We didn't really do badly.
No, no, not at all.
Well, we got a lot of retire, a lot of big retirements.
It was really trending towards with six retirements and the amount that we got from the town, but the special ed out placements were.
There's nothing you can do about.
We can't. And that's.
I mean, the fact that the council, you know, gave us all about $150,000 of the status quo was obviously a huge help.
I even thanked them on behalf of us.
We did.
I did.
Yeah, it's easy. I was there. It's nice.
Because I never do that. I have something to say to you. Were you being sarcastic? No.
It's nice to be sitting here adding positions to our status quo. The social worker we know is a critical need and the board was very supportive of, you know, putting it in part-time because we didn't think we'd have the money and we made the adjustment. Now having it going to full-time, that's going to have a full-time person down at Jerome Harrison, which is greatly needed.
You know what I really enjoyed and I would like it to become a practice moving forward as the schools are doing their budgets and the administrators are doing their budgets, that they take a hard look like they did this year because we're not always going to get above status quo. So it was so nice to like have them go back and look and tell us what they needed for the kids. And I didn't see that the first year I was on the board and this year I really did. And it meant a lot to me and I think the town council felt it as well, that there was a lot of effort going into it and it was explained in a much better fashion this year than it had been in the past. So while you guys know what you do every day, we don't. Like I know what I see at the high school and I know what I see at the middle school because I have children there, but if I didn't, largely we don't really know what goes on other than attending the event. So I thought it was really well communicated, this budget, this budget cycle.
Right.
And I think that helped our cause a little bit.
Thank you. So that being said, if there's no questions.
If nobody has a question, I'll make a motion.
And you're comfortable acting, we know that it was approved last night, that the number moving forward is not going to change.
And I'm going to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 operating budget in the amount of $32,185,714 as recommended.
I'll second. Mary, can we have a roll call though? Chairman Pappa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafriya?
Yes.
Secretary Siena?
Yes.
Janne Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Mace?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the healthy food service certification. Don will walk you through. We will need a motion on that as well if you are interested in.
Well, the other thing that could happen is this, this does not need to be approved until June. So if you wanted to, but basically, nothing has changed since the, nothing in the process has changed from this year to what it will be next year. So if we're going to continue to accept the 10%, excuse me, the 10 cent, 10% of the price, 10 cent additional money for, from National School Lunch, then we have to make a motion to do that. We also have to make a motion to approve exceptions. And as we've talked about before, those are things like games, not practices. So if, you know, you can have the concession stand open at a football game and you can serve things that aren't on the list, but you can't do that on practice days out of the T-Bird's nest. And then the third one, and this is a little bit newer, is we also have to do that same exemption for beverages, which they've now, for some reason, they've split the food and the beverages into two different motions. But as I said, you know, if you need some more time to think about this, we can certainly, we just.
But what are we with food services as far as operations? Are we in the red or are we in the black?
We're in the red.
How far?
I, right now, I would say around $60,000 for the operating revenue, but because of changes in staffing, I'm projecting about $25,000 less in health insurance benefits. So, and you know, and that's a real cost to the board as well.
Is this because, are we in the red because we're waiting to collect money that's due to us or no? That's projected in this $60,000?
No, I mean, I've gotten.
Most of it?
I think I've gotten most of it. There may be, there may be some billing lag on some of the outside stuff, but this includes all the student sales and National School Lunch and, you know, the major sources of revenue.
How much does the 10 cents, like how much does that give us at the end of the year?
$13,000?
13, so we're operating at a $60,000 deficit because our kids think the food's crap? Like, and it's, we're getting $13,000?
Well, no, we're getting an additional $13,000 if we do this.
Right, but I'm saying we're operating, our kids don't like the food. I mean, I.
Yeah, but we still have to go by some of the guidelines we keep.
Yeah, right.
No, but maybe not all. Would we make, do you think we could make back like $13,000 if we did food that they liked? You could still serve a healthy menu.
You have to understand the guidelines when you accept this are strange.
Right, but you could still serve a healthy menu. Right, so if we didn't follow, if we didn't do this.
So if you, if you pass the $13,000 back and say that instead of whole wheat pasta, we can sell regular pasta.
Regular pizza.
Regular, yeah.
Set a whole.
But that doesn't necessarily apply to the base, this is more the extra stuff.
So we are asking everything in this town, even when it doesn't need to be. I would like to sit down with the administrators, or you could not personally, and food service because this isn't working. Year after year, we operate in a deficit and it's insane. Like $60,000 is a lot of money that I really don't think we need to be losing. And I don't think we need to ask for it for sure, but we need to do our due diligence. We can't keep operating in the red over this and our kids can't keep not liking the food. Like that, that's it. I mean, I have kids at my house all the time in multiple grades and no one loves lunch. I mean, they love the socialization of it and they love, you know, that piece of it, but they should enjoy what they're eating too. I mean, that's, that's part of it. I mean, I don't, I know that everyone's worried about obesity and, and all these other issues, but we need to do something different for $60,000. I'm not saying serve Twinkies, but I am saying like it should be more appetizing. There's got to be an in-between. How many, how long? The whole wheat pasta that tastes like dirt and Twinkies.
How many years have you been doing the 10 cents? Just a couple of years, right?
This is the second year.
Second year. So.
So that would be the third year.
So we've already, so we haven't been doing it all that long and we're still in the red.
Well, I've only been on the board for two and a half years, so the two, and I can't tell you as far back, but I could tell you when my business lose at work, if I lose $60,000 for two years, I better make a change or I'm going to be fired.
Well, or you change your menu.
We've been trying to change the menu, nothing changes.
No, well, you haven't because you've taken the reimbursement.
That's what I'm saying, so let's change the menu by not taking the reimbursement.
So is that the suggestion? How is this on now?
Why don't you do this? Why don't you do not take action tonight? Let's table it because it's. Shauna?
I'm sorry.
Jack, my recommendation would be to table this tonight and then let's get hard information for June's meeting about if we do not take the 10 cents, can we serve Twinkies? Are we able to serve Twinkies and anything we want that we know?
I mean, Twinkies.
But that we know kids will eat.
White pasta and regularly.
Yeah, regular, like.
I understand not walking to a food guide, not necessarily.
As part of the, as part of the normal lunch menu, I don't believe, but that's one of the things I would want to verify.
We need to find out.
You can't, still can't serve that during the normal lunch, I don't think, because of Michelle Obama and the health.
So what's the difference between that? That's all I'm saying is let's do our due diligence.
So with that, Shauna, with that can, since this is really my first go-around with the budget, I kind of came at the tail end last year, but if this is going on year three of this 10 cent thing, what was the?
Prior to?
Prior to, was there as big a deficit? Can you pull those numbers?
Yeah, because we carried staffing down to offset that, but so you have to know exactly what we had and what we did.
It's not apples to apples, yeah.
But we can do that.
Well, the taxes on the sugary drinks that they're looking to possibly pass for.
We have no sugary drinks right now.
Well, I believe, I believe, I've heard rumors that they might be considering chocolate milk part of that.
Everything meets the guidelines that we serve right now.
Everything meets the guidelines that we serve right now. Everything that we have.
But I mean, for the state, if the state decides to tax sugary drinks like Gatorade, like chocolate milk, like will this affect our...
If we're allowed, if you say that we want to sell sugary drinks, we'd have to pay the sugary tax.
Yeah, we have to cover.
We have to abide by whatever those changes are, but right now, we are following every mandate from the federal government on safe school lunch.
Yeah, so let's just do our due diligence on it and see what's our best option.
So we'll table it. Okay. Okay, we're, okay. Southern Connecticut State University, in the past, we had a relationship with Yale University where students were able to go over and participate in coursework that were accepted and met the criteria. They did away with that program three years ago. We're excited to announce that Southern Connecticut has offered a program similar to that. So we're able to embark on an agreement with them to have our students either go over to Southern or have a professor come to us and take a college-credited course to get a jump start. So for some of our seniors, with some changes that you're going to see in our schedule and the ability for them to get involved with, if they're not taking an AP class and they want to take a college-credit course, it's a great opportunity for our kids. Mr. Steffler's been working with Southern and we've had some great dialogue and we're excited for...
Dr. Sats got back to us. She works in your human office. And they're still working on their website for accepting the information, but basically I had three questions for her. One was about the timing, what sorts of courses that we want current artists to take a look at? And then when we forward that information. Their first semester next year begins on August 27th, so they need a list from us by August 1st. So what we're looking to do is, Mrs. Torney, the guidance, the department chairs, is look for the second semester.
Right, second half year.
That way we can broadcast it to the kids and target kids and get them in hoppers, so to speak, during the fall semester. And hopefully they can take some courses the second half. They can take up to three in one year, two during a semester. They can take, they call on ground or in seat time courses. They can do hybrid or they can do online.
That's great.
So it seems like a great opportunity.
It's geared for seniors? Do seniors...
She didn't mention seniors by assignment, I think it is. She said they don't necessarily need to have the strongest kids academically, but kids are required to be consistent in wanting to be all and have that sort of experience.
College bound. You know, for our students, they're not enrolled in our AP program and our AP program is thriving right now, but it's your 15th percentile of your class. If you're looking at the 16th percentile down to the 85th percentile with the number of kids that we have going to two and four-year schools, that middle group will have an opportunity to take college courses in high school on our campus. And Southern comes and interviews our students and accepts them onsite in our guidance office.
And so these are obviously like transferable credits?
Yeah.
They're college, they're college credits.
What we said in the evaluation...
Parents will love this.
Right.
They will do an orientation with the kids once they get their permission from us and then they can send them off for registration.
It's great recruiting for Southern. They're in our backyard. They come, they meet our students, they meet their professors, and then they have enough on recruiting.
I have a couple of questions. Southern would be doing this election process?
Basically, we would be giving up a recommendation. We have a term, each student who would like to take a course needs to have a recommendation from one of the teachers that they've had here on site. And the agreement that we entered into, the kids go to Southern and take it back. Southern or online or hacked.
So if they went to Southern Connecticut to take the course, who will provide the transportation?
That would be on the parent or the kid. I think that's why, based in the agreement, it can be a hybrid situation. And I think it would come down with a course catalog and they could send us a link with the course catalog and the timeline about what sorts of courses they might need. So we haven't really gone that far yet with logistics.
And what courses would be available to them? Would it be...
She indicated mostly 100 and 200 level courses.
Introductory.
So the kids willing or looking to go into education as you and her are those kids.
So if a student has an internship, it's a senior that drives, they exit with parental permission and leave and go to the internship, it's really no different. So they would, they would either go to Southern or someone would come to us.
All right.
So that's what we did with Yale. But Yale only offers it to Haven students now.
My understanding, it doesn't have to be a senior, it could be...
Well, they'll set the, Southern will set the guidelines for ages and, you know, what the students need to have prior to taking their coursework. They may see must-pass, you know, junior English, algebra, whatever.
All right.
So they set that.
Now, do they have to pass the course or, I mean, do they get graded for the course?
I know there's a stipulation in order for them to take additional courses, they need to be successful. I don't believe this is prescriptive as Yale, but Yale indicated they had a B+ in the first course they took at Yale to continue. They haven't been that prescriptive as yet.
So if a student qualifies for one semester, you automatically go for the next semester as well?
It sounds like they could. They could take up to three in one year and no more than two in one semester. I think in part that's to protect the kid from over studying.
If it's truly a college course, then...
Is it the same cost as like for everyone else to take credits there or is it different?
No cost.
No cost. We're not paying anything.
No, but the student doesn't pay?
No.
No, so it's a recruiting tool. So what they're doing is they're getting a hook into our students who then say, you can transfer these nine credits into your freshman year if you pass them. It's a great pitch to the students.
Even their finals are free?
Everything is.
Oh, yes.
Now, is this along with, you guys are still doing, because I think when Chris went, and I could be wrong, I thought he was doing a UConn program as well with this?
That's, UConn is in housing that we teach. We teach a UConn course.
So you're doing that on top of this too? You didn't get rid of this for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our high school teacher teaches the UConn course. They have to be certified and then the kids have to pre-qualify through UConn to take the class.
Gotcha.
So we'll have UConn, AP, and now Southern.
Great.
Which is, I think Southern is going to be a broader reach to our students in that 20th, 80th percentile of the class.
Yeah. So, like that. Good.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Steffler. Okay, I'm going to run you through this, but we're going to do a PowerPoint. So there's, there's a lot of information on this now. So we have, so we passed this out to you. And as you know, over the last several years, we've been talking about a joint campus and the ability to share staff and share schedules. So the scheduling committee and the work hardworking administrators have reviewed numerous schedules from different school systems. And we have come up with a plan, a schedule, that we think that is going to work and do a lot for some of the charges that were put out to the scheduling committee moving forward. We will not put this schedule in place next year. It's important to hear right now. We're going to transition next year. We're going to run practice days with the staff and do a lot of professional development, sending teachers to the districts where these schedules are in place and have them watch the classes. And then we're going to run practice days prior to rolling this out. So following next year, we're going to begin negotiations with a couple of our bargaining units. We're going to look to tie in the ability to evaluate what we're able to do to maximize efficiency with our teaching staff in this new schedule. Okay? I want to make it very clear, we're not running one school, one campus. We're keeping a middle school philosophy and a high school philosophy. We're just capturing our ability to be on one campus with 712 certified staff members to go back and forth over the bridge to fill needs. With filling needs, we're also looking to offer more opportunities. For example, if you've had a child in the middle school theater program and you've gone to a middle school show, that middle school theater teacher, because of her certification, can go up to the high school and offer a theater class, which we do not have at the high school right now. The tech teacher at the middle school can go down or go up to the high school, or vice versa, go down, and offer classes that we don't offer right now. Okay? So we're looking to expand our offerings with our existing resources to be more efficient, but not have the one school, one model. It's still going to be middle school, it's still going to be high school. Okay? All right, if you have any questions, the PowerPoint, watch it through timelines and things like that. We can open up the administrators from MBIS and the high school are obviously a part of those committee conversations and can answer anything.
So I'll just read through the highlights. Obviously, you have the packets, the administrators have packets as well, so they can also answer any questions that you have. So the timeline really began in 2010 when administration moved the student transportation to high school, middle school to be on the same bus routes, in the same buses. And that really started to give us the opportunity to work with a combined campus in terms of securing resources and sharing them. In 2013, and this timeline really is based on much of Scott and the work that we have done since I've been here because I really wasn't privy to some of that before. So from 2013 to the present, central office and building administrators really have been talking about scheduling and how best to work schedules so that we can effectively improve student achievement and efficiently use human resources. As you've mentioned, we haven't always been as fortunate as we were this year in terms of the budget. So we have to make sure that we can still serve children. And one of the ways to do that is to make sure that we can share resources. As Scott mentioned, with people that are certified to teach both at the middle school and high school level, it really is advantageous to be able to have those teachers teach in both with a same schedule. In 2016, we were already thinking about this and we had talked at a union, teachers' union negotiations and spoke to the union, who was hesitant at first about these discussions. And we talked at that time about regionalization and things that might happen and making sure that North Grandford could be North Grandford. And make sure our school district was the North Grandford school district. And we actually had in the contract language for a committee that would help us research some things and look at some different things. So in October 2018, based on the SIG grant, we were able to contract a consulting group that really did a skill interpretation audit and let us know how we were using some of our key resources in terms of staff and time, building resources at both MBIS and MBHS. So in September 2018, regionalization came back up again and we really started to look at everything out there. We probably looked at no less than 25 to 30 schedules. In January 2019, after a report and some findings were reviewed by the committee, we started to meet as administrative team and most recently with the joint campus committee and discuss some of our options. So at this point, during those discussions, we started talking about what were central priorities and then which schedule really checked off those boxes for us. So where a schedule would allow us to do the most things that we felt were the most important to student achievement growth.
So I do, I just want to jump in and we're not going to read all of this to you, but some of the conversations between the two buildings, there were absolute things that had to occur at the middle school that at the high school would be a conflict. So the flexibility, the teamwork that went into compromising and coming to a schedule is something very amazing because of their two different philosophies and the way that we interact with the youngsters, 6 through 12. These are some of the things that we're looking to gain as we move forward in the prior years.
For the most part, they are all about improving student achievement and personal growth for students in terms of social emotional learning, increasing opportunities to bring authentic learning, problem-based activities, deepening conceptual understandings, and as Scott mentioned before, providing more course options with fewer conflicts. Allowing for students to take more courses, to allow MBIS students to come across and have access to classes at staff at high school and the same for MBHS students to have access to some of the expertise at MBIS. There is part of this in the background and one of the things that we really had to make adjustments for was that there are 25 credits required for graduation in the forthcoming years. So while right now, using something similar to the middle school schedule would only allow students to get 24 credits in four years. So those were the types of things we had to balance. And really looking at developmentally was appropriate for both sets of students and how we could make the best experience for them. So this is a tentative schedule template. I put times in based on what our day schedule is now and trying to make things as evenly distributed as possible. One of the major concerns with this schedule, with the schedule that's currently at the high school, which is similar to this, is that sometimes when we have Thanksgiving break or Christmas break, there are some classes that go longer periods of time without seeing TV than others. So we have accommodated things like that through this all-day where all-day periods mean. There's also an accommodation in this schedule of flex period with lunch, which allows us to put a flex period in at the high school, similar to an AST period at the middle school, but including developmentally appropriate things for high schoolers.
So the balance, just to jump in here, with when you look at the 70-minute, five-period day, the 470s and then the flex period, the middle school right now is on the 4x4 block, the AB, excuse me, 82, 82 or 84?
82.
82 minutes per day. It's going to 70 minutes. So 12 minutes less, which I think is a good thing personally. And then it gives us that flex period in the middle to meet with individual group students who have some needs, do the mini labs that we're looking to do. It gives the middle school the flexibility to do the same thing. They're at 62 right now?
60.
60, so they're going from 60 to 70. So it's the compromise. The skinny on the right-hand side is an eight-period day. It's that old machine gun style, you know, 40-minute classes. But what it will do is if I call two snow days in a row and we miss double blocks, I can run a skinny day in both buildings. Everyone sees all of their teachers that day, gets caught up, and then we go back to the other schedule. If it's a Thanksgiving break and we have a Wednesday day before the break and we know we can run a skinny day, so all teachers get their students. We're not going to run them every month. They're going to be strategically placed throughout the year so that the primary focus will be on longer times, more contact time, more shared ability, but the ability to be flexible with an eight-period day.
Oh, it's eight periods the whole day. It's not only seven drop one?
No.
No, it's right.
For that skinny day, it's all eight periods.
Everything.
But you wouldn't have flex on that day. So again, the reason that this configuration came to be, oh, that's a, I'm going to go to this one first, is this, these are the boxes that it checked for us. It gave us so many advantages that the high school really felt that were essential to their programming as well as the middle school. So some of that is that flex time, to continue AST differently at the middle school, but to also have that opportunity at the high school. The possibility of double block or block and half math in the LA at MBIS, which is not only very strongly encouraged using our SIG grant, but also it's one of the best practices right now. Consistent start and end times to build schedules to share staff and then it just goes on from there. Some of those things we already mentioned in what their essential priorities were. So this, this schedule allows us to do many of those things. So what I did here was because this high school schedule is similar to this, I did not do a mock high school schedule. I did do a mock sixth, seventh grade and a mock eighth grade. Just so people could see, the ideal would be to have double language arts, double math for grades six and seven. And that will absolutely require alignment staffing, use of our old K8 certification and things like that. In eighth grade, you can see Spanish is now an actual block. It's no longer during that AST period, meaning eighth graders would actually have the opportunity to also get support if they needed during that flex time and take that Spanish. So it allows some of those opportunities. So it is an exciting schedule. It's a great schedule, but why wait? So we're waiting, obviously, because it is May and we've come up with a schedule. In order to implement it by August, we really did not feel that that would allow everyone, including our staff, stakeholders, parents, students, to be prepared for that transition. So waiting or implementing during the 2020, 2021 year allows us to stakeholder feedback, staff feedback. We are going to go to schools that have similar schedules. We're going to run mock days. So to see, okay, that eight-period day or 37-minute periods, what can you get done? Is that how we want it? To look at that flex and say, okay, so what are, what are we going to do for flex? There are many things. As Scott mentioned, we can have an SAT lab. We can have a math literacy lab. We can have lots of things for students. And then obviously time to clarify our expectations for student and teacher learning and accountability and to adjust if warranted and be prepared to implement with fidelity that 2020, 2021 year.
That's great. There's a lot of time and effort put into this.
Yeah, it ramped up, obviously, this past year, year and a half with the ability to, you know, realize that... to, you know, realize that enrollment and, you know, financial stability, we need to be ready. So this puts us in a place to share staff and increase opportunities and extra charge. A lot of the things that were brought up with STEM and those abilities to do increased engineering at the middle school with Project Lead the Way, kids going up to take TV production classes from the middle school upstairs with having the buildings connected there in which we're sharing Spanish now with the teachers, that's only continuing to increase for our students a year from now, after next year.
You said you're going to visit schools that have this kind of schedule?
Yes.
What schools in the area do?
We're going to get on to Fairfield, and we're going to go to Valley Regional.
Brookfield.
Brookfield, so there's three primarily that we're going to look at, and just go to, obviously, different age groups.
Some even have a similar with a hybrid block. That's what many schools call as a hybrid block when they have that skinny day too.
So right now, the MBIS starts 10 minutes later than high school.
So what we're doing, and that's a good point, so what's going to happen is we're going to redo the bus routes. So no longer are kids going to sit and be in holding areas, everyone's going to get off the bus, go in the building, start their day at the same time. At the end of the day, everyone's going to come out at the same time and board the buses on the MBIS campus. And the high school kids cross over like they do now, so we're going to keep all the MBIS kids on the campus, and we're going to load them all at the same time. So that we know 10-minute, like now, it takes us 20 minutes to dump the building because we wait for the middle school kids to get out. That's all going to change. Is that, I hope I answered your question?
Yes.
Was that your question? Yeah.
Because there's that overlap. The 10-minute, just you said, beginning of the day and the 10-minute difference at the end.
Yeah.
And we're starting and ending at the same time.
All of that's going to change.
So the buses would have to be...
Right. And that flex period, you can do homeroom during that time of a flex period. So instead of doing it at the beginning of the day, you can do your homeroom announcements during flex period.
And if kids are going from the intermediate school to the high school, or the high school to the intermediate school, is five minutes going to be ample?
We talked about that. So we're looking at, you know, passing periods now and our Spanish kids and what they're doing to do that with our teachers, and we haven't had a problem. But we said, listen, next year, these are the types of things that we have to tweak and work out.
Right.
And, you know, we're going to try to schedule teachers so that they're back-to-back in one building, break period, and then go cross over for that next period if they have to go to another class. So we'll schedule together with shared staff so that we're not having them finish in the high school and sprint to the middle school to get there.
It looks like you moved the lunch periods out a little bit later too, because the first lunch period...
We're going to three, we're going to go to three lunch waves in each building. Yes. Do you have finishings?
Lunch, 10:30.
We do that, I might make it much earlier, which...
No, so we're going to three lunch.
That's great.
Yeah, three lunch days.
I know, 10:30, I agree.
10:30 is four hours.
I agree. Because I don't think 10:30 is that super early, when the kids get up and they don't eat breakfast and they get to school.
No, I agree, but then if they're not eating anything after 10:30 lunch and they have after-school sports, they're not eating until 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night. So if they're not having a snack.
We're a compromise, we're a little later.
Yeah.
We have two vending machines set up right now, we put those two in, and the kids are hitting it, not hitting it, but using it. And then maybe doing that. So that's been a good thing.
Is this going to affect the start time? Like, the high school started at, what did it say, 7:45, and you had a delay for the intermediate?
No, both are the same now.
They're all going to start like at 7:45?
Yeah.
They're over your time, or they're going to push back at high school to...
No, we're going to start earlier. So the buses are going to roll in like they do now, but there's no holding for the middle school to, you know, sit in the cafeteria and then do nothing. Everybody goes in, everybody starts, and that way we can share that staff.
Excellent.
Trace, I just have a suggestion. For the opportunity for stakeholder input and feedback, I think it, I mean, I think it would be really cool to maybe get kids as well to get their feedback and input on what they think this schedule is because I just know, having three kids of my own, they have a lot of input into their schedules, and I would just be interested in what their take is as well, because it's like one thing for the teachers, but, and it affects mostly the teachers, and then it affects children. So I think it would be cool to see if this works for the children or what they think or...
Well, let's just say we're not going to let them pick their schedule because they get out at noon now.
I'm saying, like, their schedule, like, does the EST, like, I don't know, I hear about the X block or the E block, or I don't even know, I don't pretend to know, but I just know Ava has really good, like, feedback.
So know that these practice days are, that's what we're doing it for.
Well, but, right, but I want there to be feedback with the children as well.
Stakeholders mean all of us.
That's everybody.
Stakeholders means everyone that could be in route at the class.
Okay, that's all I was asking, because I'd like this student feedback as well.
Administrator. So what we'll do is when we run these practice days, then when we do like an X block, they can do a survey and monkey. Online, kids can fill everything out, same thing with...
Through advisory.
Through advisory, same thing with the middle school.
And you can get the kids on that too, so it's not the parents doing it, you could go into the...
No, they can do it during the day. They can do it right after you do it during the day.
Because I think it'd be really cool to see, I mean, they're the ones living, it's the teachers and the children that are living this. And I think to get it from both ends is extremely important, because if you're not going to sell the kids on this, it's going to make the teacher's life difficult.
Oh, listen, they'll buy anything, they'll get used to it.
Yeah, well...
The high school kids are going down time per class, they're going from 82 down to 70. That's 12-minute difference. The middle school is in that 60 block, they're going up 10 minutes.
But they're having at least two less classes a day.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a compromise.
That's a step toward homework and...
I get it, but I'm just not living it, so that's why I want the kids that are living it to, I mean, it's, you know, from us, it sounds great on the outside, but when you're living it, it's a whole different...
So that, Ava, so stakeholder, just so you know, does include many different groups?
Yeah, thank you.
Including students. All right, any other questions on the schedule? We look forward to sharing information as we delve into it next year and giving you feedback. Next is the summer camp, we're excited, Shark Tank Kids, it's off like 18th summer, starting right after school lets out. We've had great success in past years. Amber Lake and Nick Schamp are our co-directors, they're both full-time teachers in the district, so we're excited. I'm not going to, I'll give you the brochure in June, so you can take a look at that of all the offerings. It's for children only, there are no adult camps in China. That's a joke. But it's another great year.
How many do we have enrolled this year, do you know?
It's online, so they started it, they gave the books out last Friday, so they start the enrollment process, so I'll wait another week and I'll shoot everyone an email to see what the enrollment is. People can do it, we do it online, there's credit cards now, they don't have to come in and register, they do everything electronically. And your activities are listed below, these are some important dates. If you're able to meet some of these dates and can be present there, we love to have you there, the kids get excited when the board is there, so come out and...
Do they really scum?
They do. They won't tell you that, it's like when you go to your kid's game, they're not going to say, hey, you know. Well, anyway, so those are the dates and times, the biggest one is June 11th for graduation. If you can't make it, please let us know so that we don't recognize you when you're not there. Retirement reception, I mentioned earlier that on the 13th Friday, our board meeting at 6:30, we are going to have a reception for our six retirees, so we'll do what we've done in the past, we'll have light hors d'oeuvres over here, and then we'll have them take a picture and shake hands with the board. That will stay the same. And that is it for my report.
Committee reports, negotiations.
I can get a question.
We'll wait for that.
That's only for an update on the arbitration that we just had last week, so it...
Two minutes.
It shouldn't be long, or you can...
Do you want to go through the Russian or some number, what are you excited about?
Yeah, definitely, okay, definitely.
Budget operations.
Thank you.
Did not meet tonight.
We need that canceled.
It was canceled, but did anyone have any questions about any budgetary issues?
Say that again?
Did anyone have any questions about any budgetary issues that they want to ask?
The, where is it at? The tennis courts.
Tennis courts.
There's a lovely banner thingy.
Oh, the wind screens, they're beautiful.
Where did it...
School choice. School choice money, I get $3,000 per student, I have 24 students, so that money goes into a separate account, and every year we buy something for the students. So we did the scoreboard last year, I'm doing the tunnel from Jerome Harrison to the building, remember the shortfall from the grant?
Right.
That, and the wind screens came from that.
They look beautiful.
But the wind screens, we don't own those tennis courts.
No, they're borrowing, it's only for tennis season, I'm putting them up and I'm taking them down. The tennis team is so excited.
You look great.
Our one-person boy team and our 17-person girl team. We are 14 and 3 right now, we had a victory today, we're heading to Old Severn tomorrow, we should be 14 and 3 tomorrow and second seed, so the kids are really excited. Tennis hasn't gotten a lot of love over the years, and it's exciting to see the courts done over and...
Well, we don't own Memorial Field either, and we put a scoreboard up there.
No, it's working together with the town, so it's a good thing, and we've gotten some great feedback, I can read a note if anyone wants me to read it, but...
So school choice is kind of like a side budget?
Right.
That is dedicated to improve the students?
Opportunities for students, right.
So it's money that goes directly to them in some way to enhance, it could be sports there, whatever, but it goes directly to them to enhance...
We're going to do the connecting tunnel, 40,000 from that money.
We use that money to redo the consumer, the foods room advisory.
We did that, so we try to balance out so everyone gets a little something.
Do we typically, just, I think the one things are great, do we typically, like, plan for it ahead of time what you're using that money for? Do you know how much you're getting every year?
It's depending on how many kids that we get. If they all come, then we could potentially get $75,000 in a year. And then we look at, like, we know we need a baby grand piano right now on the stage, so the students have been doing a great deal of fundraising. If the shortfall there is 5,000 or 10,000, and we have that money left, that money would go to the music department.
So right now, you're kind of like eyeballing on a project.
Yeah, we always try to balance it with either, you know, sports, academics, you know, the foods program, we're looking at the piano right now next.
So, like, we discussed that money was going to go towards the Jerome Harrison cut.
Yeah, only because there was a shortfall.
Right. So there's typically that discussion as to where you're going to spend that money.
Not for that money. It's all separate, and I, you know, look at and talk with the administrators.
Well, it doesn't require a vote, if that's what you're asking.
No, and then I always inform what we did to the board. This is what we, we put up the scoreboard, we did the wind nets, we're doing the connecting tunnel, we did the culinary room, I'm looking at the piano, you know, so that's what I'm charged with doing, I'm charged with taking that, you know, that money and involving my team in what's the best interest of all the kids.
Got you.
That's what we do.
I have a question. I know you talked, we talked about the retirements and you had your list, and I'm trying to get something in my head. With retirements and some of that money, was there anything, or will there be anything to maybe get the second teacher for your grant? Because we talked about that.
We don't have that money. If we didn't use the special ed...
Oh, yeah, the pre-grad? Because of special ed, I mean, there were other things on the list in front of that to be priorities that we had above that, but because of the special education funding, it was not...
As Donna mentioned, we're $176,000 surprise, and we're lucky we were able to get the social worker up to full-time, which was a big need, that was the highest priority. The second fit was the fifth grade because of the one-year blip in population, and that will go away, those kids will roll into sixth grade, so we'll get that, you know, money back somewhere leave the following year. But that wasn't one of the highest priorities.
Yeah, well, I know, but we had talked in curriculum about the possibility if...
Right.
A teacher was eliminated, like, he could move and become the teacher for that.
It'll potentially come up again next year.
Okay, I was just asking.
And there were no positions for teachers eliminated after, so that wasn't...
No, no one was eliminated.
I just had a question too. If you just, if you want to speak at like a park and rec meeting like you did, I ended up finding the minutes, are we supposed to be, like, notified or aware that you're going to be asking permission to hang up tennis nets out of park and rec?
No, they invited me to come, you're welcome to go to the meeting.
Well, it was just funny, because I didn't know you were speaking, and that's why, like, did you know?
I didn't know until, I didn't know until the day before, and they said, hey, listen, come and talk to the committee.
So I wasn't sure if it was something, because then there's a lot of hearsay.
No, you wouldn't know about that, you know about the board meetings when we're officially there, but you wouldn't go to planning and zoning, you don't go to park and rec or any of those.
But we don't usually have a park and rec meeting, don't we have, like, planning and zoning or not, no?
No, they need, park and rec needs. You're more than willing, you're able to go.
I just wasn't sure with us being on the board if we, if you...
No.
I wasn't sure what the protocol was, I was under the impression that you say, I'm going to speak at park and rec.
It's nothing there for voting, you're not voting on anything at a park and rec meeting, so you wouldn't need to be there. You're more than welcome to go and see what's going on at park and rec, but no, that's not one of your obligations to go.
Okay.
I don't want to go.
Well, you'd have to go to planning and zoning or something over signs at Jerome Harrison with the restaurant, I mean, we don't get involved in all that.
No, if you don't vote on it, you have no review of any of that, so it's not worth saying.
It's nice if we do know, so we can support you if we need to.
Well, if you're going to support me, I'll let you know.
Well, that's what I, that's why I'm asking.
I would be surprised if you didn't.
Like, if somebody comes up and says, oh, did you know that your superintendent spoke at a park and rec meeting? I'm like, um, yeah, like, it might just be good to have the conversation so you don't look like a deer in the headlights. That's all I'm saying, so that there's communication, not that we need to go or...
I want to get everybody to the meetings that they're supposed to go to, that's my first charge, is to get everybody to those meetings, not park and rec.
Make them after 5:30, Scott, make them after 5:30.
Right, I got you.
Okay.
We had no meeting tonight.
Tension had no meeting. Beth did, do you have a policy?
No, I haven't had a policy meeting, but I have a packet that goes to policy 1245, which is the oral health, which we have a lot of questions about, so I'd like to hand this out and give you time to read it, so I'd like to put it on next month's agenda instead.
So we'll take it home?
Yeah.
Rather than ask you to read it.
Beth, are we looking to...
Well, some of the questions were about...
Are we even looking to do the oral health, though? I think that was our question at, like, last time this was brought up.
Yeah, that's what I tried to, I tried to give him the questions that were raised at the board meeting.
But are we even looking into doing this for our children, or is this going to be a waste of time that we're going to read the policy and then we're not going to pass it? I guess that's my question, where are we headed with this?
If it's not statutory and mandatory, I'm not...
It's not, the state did not mandatory, did not make this mandatory.
And what if, did you speak to our head nurse? How does she feel about this?
I spoke to her briefly, you know, this isn't something that they would really get deeply involved in.
So then we don't pass it, we...
But so, he, I mean, again, the sort of the orange, the sort of the orange rating is the attorney's answer to the questions that I raised.
Well, maybe we could table it until Vinnie and come and get here, and we can ask them statewide what's worthwhile and what's not.
Excuse me?
Are they coming in June?
Vinnie and...
We haven't heard that. We just put it out to them, a response.
Because I know he's, I know they're at a session by then, I know we've...
No, so we were, we left it that...
Board could choose not to adopt the policy, plain and simple.
So I mean, interesting with the oral health is that when you look at how many kids have braces in North Cranford, is this even really needed to reread and rehash? I mean, that's just my opinion, but if you guys, you know, open for it, for that.
I mean, does anybody want to put this to bed tonight?
Yes.
Instead of putting everything till June?
I'd like to put it to bed, preferably. I'd like to put it to bed, preferably.
Do we need a motion to vote it down, or do we just say we're not doing it?
It also has...
But it also has, so just the first page is oral health, and then the second page is all the assessments, the health assessments. So I'm just speaking on the oral health. But there is a lot more to it, so... But I just don't wanna read it and hash it out if we're not gonna, if we're not serious about the money yet.
So what we should probably do is make a motion to vote down the oral piece of this and continue and read on the rest of policy 1245. So Mars, you're good at doing fancy things like that.
Section 3 oral health assessment. I'd like to make a motion to...
Instead of voting it down, should, should you make a motion to accept it and we all vote no? Is that the way to do it, or should we vote it down?
Well, if you accept it and vote no, or if you, if you vote no, then you lose all of the modifications, some of which you may wanna make.
Right, so right now, we're just...
So you're, you're saying you wanna delete the whatever...
Oral health assessment.
The oral health, too, it's page 3 of 6.
Right.
And it's in blue. It's the wrong number, 3. Right, that's what we're saying.
Then I, then I'm gonna make a motion to eliminate the oral health assessment, section 3 of the series 1,000 students, policy 1245 health assessments, to eliminate section 3 oral health assessments.
Second discussion.
Yeah. I think you're just kinda rushing this here. There's so much to read.
No, we're just doing one section.
The oral health.
Everything else is in it before the...
Because we've been analyzing the oral health. We've been discussing it for five meetings.
We have discussions, but...
Yes, we have. The oral health, absolutely.
The oral health part.
We're just, we're just omitting the oral health part, and then we're gonna go back and rehash because I just can't, I'll read this thing and come up with more questions in one go. We're really not gonna do it. Let's just not take it seriously. And then we'll read the rest of it, and then we'll vote on the rest of it. But we'll omit tonight the oral health assessments, which is on page 3 of 6.
We'll have to read them.
Yeah.
Mary, can we have a little poll about...
You, Shirkat.
Chairman Papa Holter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Jenna Bosamo?
Yes.
Carolyn Candelora?
Yes.
Vincent Ace?
No.
Cynthia Rice? Yes.
Can you come ask that?
No, no.
Okay, so then we'll take the rest of this policy and put it on June.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Jenna, did Aces have any?
Yes, they did. We had no quorum, so it was just educational purposes, it turned out to be. So they gave us a nice booklet of new things going on in Aces. I'll just mention some of the highlights. For the regional special ed transportation, they were able to reduce their wheelchair costs from $500 a day to $250 a day. So those who participated in this program got, like, half off of the costs for their schools. Behavioral services and autism programs now accept families' health insurance so they can provide home care to their family's homes and, it's covered by healthcare, which is really great for the families. East Haven now joined the board of Aces, so that was exciting news. The Leader Hill Project, of course, is supposed to be finished in the fall. That was an $83 million project. And, let's see, what else? They, in their translation services, I mean, I can't wrap my head around how much Aces does. I mean, it's just, the first board meetings I were at, I was just so confused because I'm like, what? But apparently they have now translation services, which they've had, but now they've added Portuguese, Bengali, and Russian.
Oh, wow.
Pretty cool. And they have a lot of international partnerships and exchange projects that they're continuing on. And we received, Aces received a community impact award from Quinnipiac, and there's gonna be a June 12th presentation. As usual, we have a fiscal report, a curriculum report, a human, human resources report, none of which could be approved because we did not have a quorum.
I'm surprised they let you even have, show all that information without a quorum.
No, because it's so, there's so many entities. I mean, these are all from towns from all over. So in their, in their bylaws, you could have just educational board meetings with no...
Educational purposes.
Yeah.
They get right in the bylaws also.
Yeah, so, um, they're continuing to work on seclusion and restraint. They're working at the state and federal because it's just, the new, the new requirements have made it very difficult, so they're constantly working on, trying to work through that. And I guess that's about it.
Great. There was no building committee meeting, communication consolidation.
Our next meeting is May 21st at 6:00 PM before the town council meeting. We met before their last town, 21st, 14th, 7th, I guess it was.
What's the date, Mars?
21st.
21st.
And we met, and we just shared some information. We have short discussion. It seemed like everybody sitting there really was in agreement that unless you're in one building, this isn't really gonna be that feasible, unless, you know, you're all under the same roof. But we're still exploring it and putting, we're getting, we're getting an RFP to go with, because we like RFPs.
And what time's that, Mars? How much is that RFP gonna cost?
May 21st, 6:00 PM.
Six. I'm curious.
No idea.
No idea.
Well, we put 20, they put $25,000 aside and...
You're talking about...
This is the one for consolidation.
Consolidation.
And didn't we say that Aces...
They put 25, but we don't have a ballpark idea.
Didn't we think Aces was around 12?
Well, we, we don't have a price for Aces. Krec did one.
Correct.
Krec did one, and then they're gonna look at a private vendor as well. I'm gonna talk to Aces and see where they're at, so then when we come back on the 21st, we'll have an idea. Is 25 enough? So I...
I'm gonna try to say this.
So the information, we don't have it...
As frustrated as possible.
Yeah.
So my question to you is this, and I know I couldn't make the meeting because it was at 5:30. We, as a board, are frequently criticized for spending. This project of consolidation, how many town council members do we have?
Total?
Nine.
Nine? We have nine town council members and seven members on the board of education. It is a basic restructure that anyone in business should be able to figure out for far less than $25,000. If we sat down to figure this out, we should be able to do that. So I'm so confused when we try to be so fiscally responsible and criticized so frequently for our spending. Why in the world are we spending $12,000 to $25,000 on an RFP for a basic restructure that, that most people in business can manage? I, I mean, it might be a rhetorical question, but I'm not sure how you reached that point in the meeting because unfortunately I was under, I was not able to attend. So if there's maybe minutes I can read, it might help me, it might help enlighten me.
We didn't put the $25,000 out. The town council allotted it at their town council meeting before we even had our first meeting. That was what they allotted at their town council meeting to put into this. And I'm in agreement with you. I mean, if everybody sitting around that table sat there, you were the only one missing. It was the three council members.
Because it was at 5:30.
No, I know. No, I know. I'm just saying, everybody else was there, including the three town council members that wanted to be on this, and everybody sat there and agreed that we need to be under the same roof. So is that gonna happen this year? Is that gonna happen next year?
No, but there's, so there was the agreement that this is gonna take time. We're gonna go on as business as usual, and we look at a number of things that are going on in the community, the new police station, the common area with the green and how that's gonna look with a joint building. We're all gonna come together in one place. I mean, is that gonna happen tomorrow? No. So I guess what we're looking at is we're gonna talk to some people, look who's doing it, what it would look like. Is there an existing structure that we could go into and do something where we all could come together? I know I have my opinion.
How do you need an RFP? Like, there's, there's...
That's their decision. I can only speak to what we share with what, what our thoughts were on how we can consolidate and we can do certain things in a location that is existing, and we just need to come together on it. So at the next meeting...
I'll try to be there at 6:00.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't our thought.
But...
I'm just, I, I mean, I wasn't there, so I'm not criticizing. I'm just, I don't understand how we got there.
We'll send you the minutes.
Thanks, I appreciate that. And they might even be in my email, Scott, that I missed, but I didn't see it.
No, I think they came through.
They would come from the other end, but we'll make sure they're up.
Okay. Mars, do we go to the secretary?
No meeting.
No meeting in wellness?
Do good at board and visitors.
Okay. Um, oh, good at the board. I like that part.
I went to National Honor Society. As usual, it was a very beautiful ceremony. I mean, they do such a great job. These kids, God bless them, just listening to their, you know, their plans. I mean, it would...
And the singing was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, phenomenal.
Yeah, it was so good. I was really impressed.
Those are fun things. Not that these meetings aren't a lot of fun, but those are the fun things.
It was good.
Yeah, 24 students, two of which were seniors that came on.
Now, how's that work? How come two seniors?
So they were, they didn't get in their first time around, so they reapplied their senior year and made it on. So they walked with their tassel with the honor society. So it's a nice, it really speaks to, you know, them having the great determination to stick with it and keep the grade point average where they qualify, get some of the other, you know, pillars that they need to improve upon, and now they'll go. So it's good. It was a nice night.
Great.
And the music is tremendous.
They did a great job.
I participated in the color run at TDS.
I have a picture.
Did you? And my former colleagues took great pleasure in making sure I went home as colorful as possible.
For the record, Beth, I did not throw any chalk at you, but I've got a great picture of you.
And contrary to what they say, it doesn't really wash off because my grandchildren and I were blue Smurfs for about three days.
No, and Liz Hoskins, I'm not gonna single her out. Hit me with the chalk.
Good job, Lily.
Every minute.
You don't go to a color run and walk out with a color run.
My students, she didn't care.
Is it chalk? Is that what makes you colorful?
It's like chalk powder. It's supposed to be washed, but my shower's still tie-dye.
The kids love it.
It's cornstarch.
It's a sacrifice.
It's cornstarch, it's a temper, dry temper paint. It's supposed to be waterproof, but, uh, three days.
Thanks for doing that. It was a great night. Thank you.
I went on a bus trip that Meredith Zoll had to New York to go see Frozen. So again, she did a fabulous job. It was another year of really good memories with Ava and I, and she really does a fantastic job. If you guys ever get a chance to go on one of the bus trips, I recommend it.
You know, there's a lot that goes on, a lot of these things at night, and I know it takes up our time. I know it's more time, and, and, you know, everybody's got busy lives, but I think it's really important to try to have representation there. You know, there's seven of us that we split up, and it's important to have representation in these things. It's, it shows that the board is supporting them, and I think that's really a key component here.
Are we saying things that we've done?
Yeah, go ahead. What'd you go to?